Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. We are going to move into a brief executive session. We will return shortly. Can I have somebody move that?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, passes 6-0-0. All right, we will return very quickly. Welcome back. I would like to just go over a few housekeeping things with us. Well, first, I'm going to ask that we move the agenda and ask Mr. Palvino if everything is set on there and will be having any amendments for 04.
Where is it?
For you.
We're going to be adding a resolution to the CV's agenda with respect to the scheduled appointment of the school business administrator. And it'll be number 7.17, appoint business official.
Okay. Can I have somebody move that?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, passes 6-0-0. In the event of an evacuation this evening and we need to exit the building, we have a door right behind Mr. Henderson. We can take it out to the left, go through Mr. Palvino's door here to my right, and move as far away from the building as possible. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? It's over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then I am just going to text it in. Nobody signed up for public forum. If anyone at home was interested or in the community of getting ahold of the board members, you can reach us at our email, which is clerk@fulton.cny ric.org. If, for action 1.07, approve the December regular meeting minutes, can I have somebody move that?
Move it.
Second. Is that Lori?
Yes.
Okay. And family. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, passes 6-0-0. We have some meetings coming up in the next month. This Thursday, the 30th, for those of you who are interested and this is extended to Mr. Palvino and his team as well. We will be meeting with our school, Asuaco County School Boards Association, and they have our Assembly Minority Meet, Will Barkley, who will be joining us and other districts' schools in our district at the Mexico campus. That will be at 3:30. If you have an RSVP, it is still not too late. Just let me know and I will send that on to Mr. Kappa. If you cannot make it but you do have questions or is there anything you want Mr. Barkley to know that we're looking forward to have him help us with in our district or in our surrounding community, let me know and I can make sure that I pass that along. Or is anybody going? Do we know Lori's going? You're going to be there?
I'll make it.
Okay. Mr. Connors?
We'll have you there.
Okay. Nope. Okay. So, and I know that Mr. Palvino will be there. So, if there's anybody who has something, just let us know and we will make sure that we pass that on to Mr. Barkley.
Where are the people RSVP'd?
From us or in general? I'm not sure because we haven't had a meeting, I believe. We have people from Mexico.
Yeah, I provided the information in the weekly update. Go ahead and you have the information to reach out to Mr. Kappa.
Yeah, oh.
That's what Vic was asking about how to register, right?
No, I think he was asking me how many people.
No, no, no.
How to.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I heard what you were doing.
Okay, I'm so sorry, Mr. Palvino.
Although I haven't done that yet.
It is open to all school board members and our superintendents and their teams through the school members through Asuaco County. So, any of our school districts will be there. And Mexico has graciously offered to host it there at their business office. So, yeah, if you're still interested in going, just send out a quick email or let me know and I'll pass that information on. We have a tentative budget workshop for February 4th that we would like to hold as a meeting. So, I just want to reach out to my colleagues for 6 o'clock on February 4th. Will it work for you to have a budget meeting with our team? You will. Yes? Okay. So, go ahead and put that right on. We are going to go forward with that February 4th meeting.
Do the announcement. Thank you.
All right. There's policy meeting coming up, a couple of our regular board meetings coming up for February. February also has the live virtual capital conference, which is on February 7th. That is required registration if you haven't. I know that Mr. Palvino has put that in the backup as well. If you have some time to jump on to go through that, that is just getting us ready for what's coming next. I know that the lobby day is February 12th in Albany. I'm not sure if some of my colleagues are going. I know that Mr. Palvino's going and I'll be carpooling with him.
Anybody else who would like to, Lori?
Mrs. Prab. Anybody else going? You're going to the lobby day.
I think so.
Yes, would you like to carpool with us? Or, okay, there we go. And then if anyone else, are you going with us?
No.
Mainville?
Not at this point.
Okay. So, we've got a few of us going. So, you just let us know when the go time is and we'll be ready for that on February 12th. Also, a couple of exciting things. I know that Mrs. Perry put in front of us the Asuaco County School Boards and the Central New York School Boards presentation of the Evening with AI. Mark that in your calendars. That is for March 27th, which will be held at City Bosse's in Mexico. We have Dr. William Daggett joining us. I know that Mr. Dijon Lorman, myself, has had the opportunity to see him speak at a couple of conferences over the summer. And Ed Finney from, I will say this wrong, Shadoak, Central School District?
Skodek.
Skodek, okay. I apologize. He will also be joining us and it seems to be like a wonderful evening for us to, you know, get to know what's going on in the AI world and ask our questions to these gentlemen. So, I hope that you can join us for that as well. Those are what we have on the list coming up so far. Are there any questions about those? Are there any questions about those? I do have one more thing that I would like to update you guys with and to let our community know what's going on. As you all know, that we are in a search for a new superintendent for our district. We, the board, have been working with Superintendent Chris Todd from City Bosse, Oswego City Bosse. I want to let you know that that search has begun. The invitation of application has been sent out electronically to our surrounding school districts and throughout the state as well. There is a link that is up on the Niskus and I believe the NISBA website. So, if anybody out there is interested in applying, that's where you'll be able to find the link. The application process is going through February 14th. Once that goes through, we will start our interview process with the candidates that Mr. Todd brings forth to us. He will be doing a few public forums with stakeholder groups. He will be doing separately, a group for our students, a group for our parents, one for our staff, and also one for community members. He will be reaching out to individuals with a Zoom, quick Zoom meeting and a survey that he will have them be filling out for those who are participating in those stakeholder groups. This will help him get a feel for what we are looking for as a whole community for our next superintendent and a feel for what Fulton really needs moving forward. So, that is where we stand at this point so far for my colleagues. We will probably be meeting with Chris Todd next month at one of our board meetings. He'll come in and we'll just kind of go through some things that, you know, we need to go through. And if anybody have any questions?
Who, how are the stakeholder groups being formed?
He is taking care of all that. He's reaching out to different groups and having people's names put in. So, he will be reaching out to parent groups. He will be reaching out. I'm not sure if he's reached out to you yet, Ms. Perry. I know he's going to be talking with some of the principals. I've also sent out an email to you, my colleagues. So, hopefully you got that over the weekend. If there were any community members that you had in mind, forward them to me ASAP. He's just looking for a wide variety of people throughout our district in general.
Right. I just don't know how he's choosing them. Like, how does he know, like, what parents to contact or what students to contact?
He will be contacting PTO members. So, he will get names from these groups, from principals groups. Who else is he?
The unions.
The unions, yes, that's true. He will also be meeting with our, our local unions to get the, the staff names and numbers. So, he will.
So, it's volunteer?
It is. If they don't want to do it. I know I've had community members say, no, thank you, but thank you for the offer.
I was just wondering, like, how, like, how we're choosing people? That's all.
It's all through Chris Todd because we put that in his hands. So, once we give him names, he will choose from that list of names.
How are we giving him names? Like, how are the names being chosen?
He is reaching out to the union groups, the principals. So, they will be giving him them names. Like, if you have someone in the community you are, you think might be interested, send me that name so I can send that forward.
And the principals will give names of, like, students.
Students. And the union leaders will be doing. They are, he definitely said he would be reaching out to the site base as well. Yep.
Okay.
So, he will get that. I, I am not going to see the list of parents, students, and teachers and that kind of thing. We won't, we won't see that list. We will be seeing whatever we send forward to him for community members. That's the only list that we will see. And then he'll go over all of the information with us. And through a survey, he'll get all of his answers through a survey that he will be giving to each group with questions.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Well, with that, then, I guess we will pass it on over to our superintendent for the superintendent report.
All right. For anybody that's applying, I would be applying if I wasn't the superintendent now. So, it's a great, it's a great place to be in. And they're going to find out one of the reasons why those of you that are watching or will watch renditions of this, you're going to see some of our students present. Another reason why this is such a special place to be. So, tonight, it's my privilege and an honor to kick off this evening. It's been a while since we had a meeting. This group was scheduled, actually, at our last meeting and we got weathered out. We had the City of Fulton in synergy, Ms. Knoll and Ms. Rodriguez. There she is, as well as a cast of students. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Henderson and the team from Synergy City of Syracuse.
Well, I think you're already good at the interdeckers. I'm pleased to announce Denise Rodriguez and Karen, our structural coaches, who are, who are joined from G R B students. And Miss Blake, who is presenting updates to our capstone project. And just this morning, we had a new release of a commercial that we'll be sharing as well.
Yeah. So, before we begin, we did have Ms. Perry hand out this document here. We have a few documents for you to kind of peruse as you are listening. These are descriptors of potential projects. And then this document is our New York State Portrait of a Graduate. And there are some descriptors around. And we just encourage you, you don't have to. But while you're listening to our presentation, be thinking about how what students have done last year and what we're thinking about doing moving forward ties into the New York State Portrait of a Graduate. Again, not required, but something maybe to kind of get your brain spinning as you listen to all the things these kids have done. All right. So, we're going to just give you some capstone updates, our vision and goals for this year, our project options, which you have in front of you, our timeline, and our next steps. Just to review, the Junior High Capstone is designed to give students a meaningful foundational civic experience before entering high school. New York State gives us two options for our students to earn this point. They could develop an action plan and complete community service hours, or they can develop an action plan and address an issue in the community and just present the plan to a wider audience. Our teachers started last year with option B and students did a phenomenal job. They were looking at census reports. They were looking at city data. They were finding resources in our community. They developed action plans to address problems. And then they communicated that and presented to their peers. Actually, this is the class that did that, right? You guys remember? And then what we decided is, you know, why not also have them do community service hours? And how can we make that happen? And it couldn't have happened without the help of our city officials. So, we'll get into that. But on the next slide, to earn the Seal of Civic Readiness, students need six points from these two columns. There's a civic knowledge column. They need at least two points from that side. And then there's a civic participation column on the right, and that, they also need two points. So, there's two points minimum on each side, six points total over the course of their eighth grade year through high school. So, just by our students participating in the Junior High Capstone Project, 203 out of 223 students earned their point. Because if they were absent or couldn't, for whatever reason, do the presentation, they were able to still earn that point by doing a community service. And if they missed the day of community service, which we didn't have many students miss that day, but if they did, they had already earned their point by doing option B. So, it was a really great opportunity. And Mr. Casulo did report to me that right now, this class of students, every one of them, 100%, is on track to earning their seals. A lot easier than the classes before them because it's been a little bit of a challenge on that side. You can see, like, even a community service hours is 25 hours to get half a credit. Doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're a high school student and you're in sports, you know, that can be challenging. So, we're really proud of that. And because of that, we decided, how can we make this even bigger? But let's take a look at, this is hot off the press, the draft, but we wanted to share with you because we love it so much. We've got to start over because there's no sound. Can you do the volume from?
Do you need to, Chris? Can we turn the speakers up? Is it going through the speakers or not?
Yeah, it's going through the speakers.
Maybe that's such a source.
There you go.
There we go.
Heard something. There we go.
Apologize.
No worries. Try again.
Imagine a city where young minds ignite change. A place where students aren't just learners, they're leaders. The City and School Synergy is making this vision a reality. By uniting the power of education and community, we're fostering a new generation of engaged citizens and transforming our city in the process. Our students are taking the lead. They're tackling real-world challenges, from revitalizing parks to promoting environmental sustainability. The new Seal of Civic Readiness recognizes their commitment to civic engagement and social justice. Through hands-on experiences and academic enrichment, we're empowering our youth to reach their full potential. They're developing the skills they need to succeed in college, career, and life. Our students are embodying the portrait of a graduate, developing the skills they need to flourish. Together, we're building a stronger, brighter future for Fulton. Join us in shaping the next generation of leaders. The City and School Synergy, a united future.
All right. So, our goal, that is, Alex Richmond actually created that for us just to help get our word out and potentially get more people to want to invest in what we're doing. So, we did create the City and School Synergy, a United Future Committee. And on that, you can see we have a list of city members and also school members. And the whole idea behind creating this committee is we wanted to hit the ground running. Last year, we really decided to do this late February and it was this kind of scramble, right? We had a lot of work to do, a lot of money to try to raise to make it happen. So, this is our committee. Our vision is that students will take an active role in their community by taking ownership of various areas around the city throughout their junior high and high school careers. This will build the habits necessary to become active citizens in our community and to make Fulton an even better place to live. Our goals for this year are to keep going with North Bay. The last thing that we wanted to happen was this to be a one-and-done activity. Like, they, they went out, they cleaned up North Bay, and they're never going to go back. Well, we know what happens when it doesn't continue to get cleaned. So, how can we keep it going? This group of kids went back out to North Bay. We're going to keep it going. And then we're going to create a new opportunity for the class of 2029. And then, of course, we have our committee. We want to continue to develop and grow that committee just for sustainability to see through our long-term goals.
So, one of the things that Denise had talked about was creating an opportunity for class of 2029. So, if you can see on the year 2425, where we're, we're at right now, we are now going to have two cohorts of kids that will, they have picked a place in Fulton that they want to revitalize for the next five years. So, next year, we'll bring on another cohort. And you can see, by the time 2829 comes, we're going to be super busy. But it, the impact that it has on this community, we're hoping, is immense. They're going to be adopting a place for five years. It's their own. They can make their mark. And they really have to coordinate their efforts, not only with the school district, but with the city itself. When Denise and I were planning this, if you can look at the Portrait of a Graduate, everything that the kids are doing, they're talking to the mayor, they're talking to the department, Parks and Rec Director. They're talking about finances with picking out what they want to do and if, if we can do it, what we need to do budget-wise. They know that it's not just them, it's bigger. So, they're, they're really becoming global citizens and trying to figure out what the impact is for not only their class, but for others to utilize that space. So, when we went to go visit, they noticed that the playground needed more access for students with disabilities. So, one of the things that they want to do is raise money. So, when they graduate, they have a swing that's out there for somebody who's in a wheelchair can, can actually swing with. So, this year, class of 2029 is coming on board. And Denise and I worked with Jim Fafaya and we brainstormed a whole bunch of parks that were in the area and what, what needed to be done there. And I brought those parks to a digital media photography class and we researched the history. We went and photographed the places. They actually developed their own action plan for how we can revitalize these parks. So, the four that were presented to the current eighth graders were the Abbott Park Playground, Canal Landing, Foster Park, and Recreation Park. What was kind of cool from that is they were actually able to earn points for their seal as well. So, that was kind of a nice thing to add. So, so, the eighth graders met. They actually had a presentation from Chris Waldron, while these kids talked about the capstone project to the seventh graders. So, they're getting really good at public speaking. Just to get them excited about or curious and wondering what kind of differences they can make in our community. And the eighth graders picked Canal Park as their project for the next five years. So, Denise and I are continuing to reach out to different community partners. And also, we're trying to secure some financing to make these projects that they pick a reality. So, these are our freshman class officers. They're going to chat about what they did. Do you want to go to Denise?
Hi, I'm Julia Tamarkio. I'm the freshman class president and these are my fellow class officers. I'd like to start by thanking the board for allowing us to share what we have accomplished and what we are planning for the following years. So far, as a class, we have cleaned, beautified, and enhanced the campground. This project has impacted our class in many ways. It has brought our class together and given us all a sense of accomplishment. We are very proud of the project. We have had the opportunity to work with city officials and come up with new and intensive ideas. The project has given us all credit towards our Seal of Civic Readiness. We are brainstorming and looking forward to the future project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the kids that you want to ask? I know that Denise and I have been chatting a lot.
I know you're part of this, Mrs. Tamarkio.
Do the other officers want to introduce themselves?
I'm Brooke Closey. I'm the treasurer of the class of 2028.
I'm Amy Curly, Vice President.
My name is Jim Goss and I am the secretary.
And over to our right is Ms. Huggie Link, who is our supervisor. So, she's actually, I kind of brought this idea to her and I'm like, we need to keep this going. What do you think? She's like, absolutely, absolutely. So, trying to get her up to speed, she was like diving in, what, what's best for the kids? How can we get this going and keep it going? So, so, she was, she's the one directing traffic in that picture. She's telling her.
The one thing I want to say that I thought was really cool, excuse my voice, when I got there, I got to see what they had done. So, everything was playing catch-up when I went to the playground, to the campground. And the kids were, to see their excitement, they're like, oh, oh, look at this. I need to do this. We need to get, we need to get a spotlight. We should get some, and I'm like, like, we haven't even got to the campground yet. This is awesome, though. To see them with that kind of excitement was so cool. That was intriguing.
One of the things that we chatted about was we showed Ms. Link what the, what the kids did. And every place we went, it was like, oh, this is what we have to offer, but how can we make it better? And they were thinking globally, like, how can we attract people to come here to the campground? How can we have more people come to this area to see the beautiful, like, shoreline? And one of the things that they want to do is revitalize that one nature trail and have a bunch up there because we have nesting eagles. Like, they were very thoughtful. It's, if you give kids a voice, what they come up with is just amazing.
Did we talk about we could ramp to go out on the water to? It would be most expensive.
They have big dreams.
They like it. But the one thing I thought was really neat, that they'd already, so, they're cleaning up. They're doing that. But what I, I'm like, there's this tree section that's kind of fenced off. I was like, what's this? Well, they had planted specific, they listened to the city people, specific types of trees and some bushes in this area. And the goal is to let these grow during the next five years, four years, I guess, at this point. And then those will get transplanted into the city of, of Fulton.
There is a precious city.
And we're, we're hoping actually, I don't want to grow them, but we're hoping to do more trees and things like that. So, we're constantly having that turnover to add to it. Because I believe, you're the one who told us they had to take a bunch of trees down.
Oh, that would be Mr. Waldron.
Oh, it was. Was it the ash?
Well, there was, one of the trees was destroyed because there was, yeah. And then some have a big root system. They, they learned a lot of science. They learned a lot of science, which is my thing.
So to ask the kids, what do you like about this approach to learning? See, I just heard Ms. Knowles talk about science. I heard about presentations. I heard about business. I heard about science. I heard about math because I heard budget. I heard English presenting and putting a presentation together. I hear social studies, history, and understanding developing community. Tell me, this is a very different way to approach learning. What do you like about this approach?
I feel like it's a different, I like learning like hands-on more. So like, sitting down with a book is kind of like, and looking at a computer, like, you get a headache from looking at computers. So going and learning stuff by being at a campground and learning about different birds that are there, how we can make a nature trail and look at the birds, it's kind of cool.
I like the environmental part and like what we can do to better our community.
Like, it's a new way to learn new things because most of the time you're in the classroom and you can learn new ideas outside.
I like the sense of community, like, of all of you guys. There are different pockets and there are different classes and how to get your little group.
Yeah, when we do, when we do the campground project, we like sign up for like what we're going to do. And it's actually kind of fun to like socialize with like everybody in the class. Like, last year was actually really fun. Like, even when you didn't do, when you didn't sign up for, to do that thing, if you got done with yours, you can go help that other group do what they're doing.
I have a couple of, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, yes, please.
And also, I think I have some kids' social skills because, well, I was doing things with people I'd never met before, and I talked to them, and now I'm friends with them. So it's like, some kids who are really like shy and quiet need other kids and give them a finer social.
That's awesome. You said that your goals are big, you want to put your mark on the community, which I love. Because you guys are going to always have that. You're going to know that you helped the community with what you have at the parks and beautified. What are we doing for the fundraisers? Because you said we are doing fundraising. What kinds of things are we doing so that our community members, so that we as board members know how we can help you guys raise those funds?
Great question. In our spare time, Mrs. Knowles and I write grants. And we have exciting news. We did receive $8,500 from Schenectady Foundation and $6,000 from Brookfield. And we're going to reach out to block builders. But the idea, Amercub is going to sponsor a project at North Bay, and they want to come help. The idea behind the commercial is getting the word out there so we can say, and we're going to have a series of commercials so where we can say, we need mulch, we need rakes, like, we know we're going to need rakes. We didn't have enough last year. We're going to need grow girls. We didn't have enough. The city brought what they had. They thought that was going to be enough until they turned the corner and saw a sea of orange shirts. You know, like, oh, this is more kids than we thought. So, you know, we do need things like that, so. And then this group of students have been working hard. I mean, they have their own class fundraisers that they organize, but...
We did a Krispy Kreme fundraiser because we're raising money to buy t-shirts for... And Texas Roadhouse one.
It's a surprise.
It was a surprise for the ninth graders.
Surprise for the ninth graders. I hope they're not watching.
We're raising to buy t-shirts for everyone in the freshman class.
Wow, that's great.
With like the new logo, the dragon logo, so that everybody has that.
There's no class that has one right now. And we also recognize that everybody can afford to get that. So the goal is to do it for everybody in the class.
I can't help but feel like you guys also, learning about the community and learning about the different parks. I'm willing to bet that a lot of our students have never even been there before. So learning more about the community and what we have to offer as Fulton, and you guys are just like taking the lead and deciding what you want to do and how you guys are going to get there. And if you don't have the means, how are you going to get the means? Like, through your fundraising, through the grant writing? I'm sure all of that is, you're learning about all that, so I can't think of anything better. But that's, congratulations, guys. And the park does look great.
One of the things that I am super excited about is with all these different opportunities, it's a way to open a discussion with students who didn't think about like different careers. Like, Mr. Waldron is really great about coming in and saying, look, I'm the director of Parks and Recreation, and I didn't even know that was a job until I was in college, and exposing them to that. And so our students at like North Bay, you know, there's opportunity to discuss like the National Park Service and what's that look like? And with Canal Landing, you know, there's opportunities to talk about, you know, like the jobs on the canal and the tugboat engineers and the lock and all these other opportunities.
The WU has been big in the city as well.
Yeah.
The workers and connecting with them.
That, yeah, the hydropower and even grant writing. Like, the grants that, you know, they're writing to sustain these projects are great career opportunities for our students. So, I mean, it serves our community, it serves our school, it's, I mean, it's just all around a really great, incredible project.
I'd like to add too, I really commend you guys. I just read today, actually, The Mount of Repose by Jim Paphia. And, you know, it's about the history of Mount Edna. And Fulton has such a rich, rich history, and I think people have forgotten that over the years. And I have to say, you know, unfortunately, I've lived here my whole 66 years. And it's changed a lot, but with people like you, I think it'll bring it back to its original splendor someday.
Really, I think one of our unintended outcomes that we're seeing is that bridge between the youth of our community and the older people in our community. And that instead of, I'm feeling like the culture's changing, where they're like, oh, they're teenagers, they don't care. And when they really stop to listen, they have a voice, and they really, they do care, and they're proud of where they're from. So it has kind of given us a pause to make that connection happen.
Yeah, and our community has been so supportive, like the Rotary Clubs and the Black Builders. I mean, we really have a phenomenal community that's willing to, you know, come in. I know there's other clubs that have reached out as well. I mean, things that you've never heard of, working together as a community, we have a lot of support.
Well, you are the future of Fulton. You are our next generation. So what you're doing keeps us going. Like, you were saying, there's that generational gap where, well, there's that generational gap where they think these are just teenagers and they don't care. But you guys care, and you can spread the word to your peers. And, you know, I love that you guys are just taking this on and loving every moment and learning. And are they helping you with the grant writing? Are you teaching the math skills?
I mean, that is a huge...
To get students in on that process, for sure. This year, we had a little bit of a time crunch because Schenectady actually opened the grant window. They opened it time for us to be able to apply earlier, so then we have to wait to see if we're going to, you know, because we have to start buying things. Life is a little stressful. But, so they opened a window for us, maybe it was about a week to write the grant. So a lot of late nights, but our big goal is definitely to have students involved in that process because, as Phelan said, it's a huge job opportunity if you can write a grant. I mean, it's a lot of work.
Well, they did write a letter for us.
They did write a letter to support us.
I'm like, oh, guys, and they're like, okay.
But yeah, Jim Paphia has been a huge partner. And I think our goal, to your point, is bringing Fulton back. How do we do that? We need to be proactive, and it starts with our kids.
You guys are the spark.
Yes, yes. Well, thank you guys for all you do. We are so excited. We can't wait to see what happens next.
I have one more quick question.
Sure.
I'm not sure who the best could be to answer this, but with the increased amount of community service, are we seeing an increase in the amount of students that are eligible, applying, or actually getting into the National Honor Societies?
We, actually, last night was the National Honor Society convention, and Mr. Pissul said our numbers increased quite a bit. We were, I think, 37. The year before was...
Like 21, I think.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking, is one of the requirements that I imagine enables more kids to apply, be involved, and be a part of that program.
Yes, and a lot of students have expressed interest after these guys presented to our seventh graders. We had, I had seventh graders stopping down in my office asking how they can be class president. And I just think that's a beautiful thing, and I told them that. And like, the fact that now you've got it in their heads, like, how can I make a change and how can I be a part of that? And then a lot of students out on that day talked about, they didn't realize that's what community service was. They were having a lot of fun, rolling their sleeves up. And students who think school is really challenging and don't like to go every day, you know, our teachers were like, I couldn't get them away from the project. Like, they were like, I have to finish, and we're like, the mayor wants to see you. And it was just, I mean, you couldn't have asked for a better result, honestly.
To Karen and Denise's credit and this group, us doing the Seal of Civic Readiness, we're doing it for the whole class, all of our classes. So more of our kids are getting this, where a lot of schools in our region are looking at the traditional kids, the students who were Honor Society kind of kids who were getting the seal. To that point, what you just made, this opens the eyes of a lot more kids that this is an option for them, that it's not just certain kids who participate and lead and can do this. So I appreciate that you're getting together and widening your circles a little bit with each other within your own group, but also with the adults in the community, knowing, knowing Mr. Paphia, who, you know, how many books does he have now? Like, eight or nine books, and is constantly working toward that, the group that is together and volunteering. They're part of our community's volunteer force. They're part of our Rotary and our Lions Club, are just, it's a lot of folks that are leading. So we appreciate that you're doing that, too. It's nice that this is an opportunity for all of our kids.
And please take back to your peers, you know, we thank you for what you're doing. And, you know, keep making your community beautiful, keep being involved in your community. And we just thank you guys so much for it. And for you who are leading our youth into this, you know, love of working in the community, thank you. Thank you for all that you guys do.
Great job, folks. It was a nice job.
Thank you.
You know, we'll give you the day off. Come on, hold on.
Oh, that's so kind of you, Mr. Henderson.
Great job, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
To our staff, thank you so much. Thank you for your leadership.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I don't know how we follow that.
So proud of this work. And what's interesting is when you walk through the junior high, other kids are seeing that and talking about this, and you're actually seeing the other teams in the school changing and doing some interdisciplinary projects leading to this. So what you're seeing, where I was going with the question I asked about learning, was that it's also expanding what teachers think we can do with kids as well. And the opportunities and the leadership that's coming from the staff that's involved is starting to also be replicated in other places. Someone you talk to like Eric, and I see this going, and it's cool that it started in the middle because it's now going to go lower towards first grade and kindergarten and forwards to senior year. Eventually, you'll see that, and this fits with the Portrait of a Graduate so well with the work and this approach, where, as somebody said with attendance, we talk a lot about attendance, kids get excited because it's hands-on, interact, they want to be there. They want to see the outcomes. And then they're picking up that information they don't even know, like they said, we're really learning. And that was interesting for what I'm saying. So you can see we get excited. I think we're on to something. It builds off, builds into some of the early college, high school stuff. I mean, really, you can see how this kind of is pervasive.
Education and learning is changing, and you want to see them, yeah.
I think we're on to something here with a number of things. I think it's something that my peers, our peers in our other districts are not doing it in the depth that we're doing this. And to do whole classes is really exciting.
Sounds like a great segue to our...
Segue.
It's spreading out. Last week, we had our social studies elementary curriculum council meeting, and they're exploring ways of how to do like a kindergarten and Seal of Civic Readiness, a first-grade one. So setting that stage for awareness of what is the Seal of Civic Readiness. We also have the Seal of Bilinguism and I4C, New York State having more seals. So I think the more awareness and opportunities we can give our kids now, when they get to the high school, we're going to...
We have the Art and Music Seal.
Arts, yep, Arts Pathway. There's 47 pathways in New York State towards graduation, and the Portrait of a Graduate is going to allow us. And I think here in Fulton, we have opened many paths. We're building paths. And we're not just opening, we are actually building a structure and a system for them. So Seal of Civic Readiness, the Bilinguism, we've been pushing, we're starting to see that growing out. That's going to be an exciting one. And there's a number of the Arts Pathway. So we're just going to keep chipping and building out, and I think you're going to have some very exciting things to build on here in Fulton. So with that, it leads us into our Strategic Coherence Plan Survey results. Mr. Henderson? Present. You received a lot of information and backup, lots of information to digest there as well. We provided you all the comments there.
So as always, we kind of start this with our vision, our mission, and our values, looking at our plan, our five-year plan, and how it all connects together. So this is our survey. We've done this annually with our last plan, two times, so semi-annually. We'll continue to do that. We changed up the survey a little bit this year. And hopefully, we can get some, not only get some responses, but get something that we can, some things that we can respond to and look forward to, make some changes that our stakeholders are appreciative of, build on our strengths, and then look to close some of the gaps that they're seeing as well.
We organized the questions this year into the three sections, Culture, Systems, and Learning, with the three areas that we surveyed, families, students, and staff.
If you go back to that one slide, just what I would interject, think about what you just saw and experienced, and look how it fits in that system. Learning Wellness and Life Pathways at the center, systems and structures to support the kids, creating that culture of working together for the betterment of our community. So it's very interesting. You just saw something where that's, this is, it really epitomizes the work that we're trying to do.
When we put this together, this, it's kind of nice that Denise and Karen brought this with because this circle, the learning pathways, is really what that center circle is for us. And when we presented this in the summer, we said, this circle can really overlay that as we move forward. That's what we're looking for. And the idea of the synergy part of this, it's pretty intentional on New York State's part that this is like a color wheel and they blend together. It's not separate, seven separate components. It's supposed to be a blend that works together with each other. So you don't do them individually. You do exactly what we're doing with like the City and Synergy. You do one thing that covers a broad range of the colors on there.
I just wanted to draw attention. I think we need to do more of that. Oftentimes, our boards, we don't bring things together. I think constantly coming back so you can see those connections to the work we're doing. So just hope we take advantage of that. Thank you.
So this is, this slide represents the number of responses we had to our first survey. We also included the spring of last year, just for comparison purposes. We had, from the results, we had an increase from 375 family responses to 460 in the fall, so we're excited about that. Again, this is the first time we've released the survey, so we've already been brainstorming about how we can increase those numbers with families. And when we release it and how we release it and communicate that. The staff results, we had a slight decrease from 435 in the spring of last year to 393 in the fall, and a slight drop with our students. And again, we've already started digging in and analyzing those results and thinking about how we can increase those numbers to get more representative results. This slide breaks down how many responses we had from each of the buildings for the family survey. And this slide represents the four questions we asked under Culture. I feel that staff treat my children respectfully. I feel the staff treat guests respectfully. The Fulton City School District values input from the community. My children feel good about going to school.
As you look at the pie graphs, you can see Always Would Be is always going to be blue. Most of the time, green, and then rarely, yellow, and never is red. Historically, when we've looked at this data, we've looked at trying to get our positives, like the Always and Most of the Time, over 80%, and eventually up to 90%. I think in almost every area with this survey, we were over 90% or very close to it. Like, for instance, my children feel good about going to school. That's 89.1%. So we feel pretty positive. It would be nice, obviously, to have more Always and have that be the dominant piece of the pie.
And Jeff?
Yep.
Just not being able to, you know, grasp all, you know, the different pieces.
Yep.
On a wholesale level, I guess, because there's going to be a bunch of different areas. Could you just point out any of the ones where, I guess, we noticed maybe difference? You know, I hate to say focus on the negative, but, you know, it's kind of the, are there any worry areas? And I mean, there are, you don't have to, you know, specifically point at anything, but as long as we're staying stable or even a little higher than we were in the spring, just so I can, you know, be aware of everything that sticks out.
Some of the questions we've changed since this spring, and that's why we didn't add those questions on here. We revamped the questions that we asked and to align with the three circles, culture, systems, and learning pathways. So we have some comparison data from the spring, but we are analyzing this and we're going to do more of the tier fidelity checks, which will dig down deeper for some specific questions.
And those don't factor into these, though, the fidelity ones, right?
No, they don't. The reporting out is not what we base those on from, from this. So when we see areas, to your point, when we see areas that we want to take a look at and dig into a little further, this is the driver for the fidelity inventory.
Okay, got you, Jeff.
Okay, so like, for instance, in this case, with feel that staff treat my children and staff treat guests respectfully, those are both really pretty close, like ninety-five percent or above. So pretty good shape. Input from the community is that, on this graph from the family, is the one where people said not as much as we would like sometimes. So we took a look at that and, and between that and the comments that we read, and kind of poured through, we took a look at what, what it was about communication and input that they, they wanted more of or wanted us to change or look at. So is that what you mean, like, can you want us to highlight some of that? Okay, we can do that.
That way you don't have to go into every single.
Yep.
But yeah, thank you.
You bet. As far as the family with systems, it was nice to see seventy percent of families said that they have access to their teachers directly to, seventy percent said always have access to ask about progress, which, I mean, that one stands out on this slide. And again, between always and most of the time, ninety-three percent, a little over ninety-three percent of families feel good about getting in touch with their, their kids' teachers and making sure they're getting what they need for success. Goals is one that we kind of focused on with this one. Learning in different ways, obviously, we just had that presentation where we want to do a little bit more aligned with that. We heard directly from the kids, they're saying that, families are saying that more that we can do, access to learning in non-traditional ways is going to be beneficial for them. Keep going. All right, so as far as, to wrap up the family survey with learning, I don't know if any of these kind of stick out to you. For me, the, I understand what my children are learning and what I need to do to support them. Rarely and never is about twelve, almost thirteen percent here. So that's one of those areas where we want to make sure that we have things like the lens of learning, which was developed. We have the resources that we've developed and can communicate to families. We want to make sure that they know. I know the superintendent's team is kind of working on a series. When we had our, our district coherence team meeting, Robin brought up the, the idea that how we are currently communicating is with our school community, but not always with the greater community. So we're talking about what we can do to get our information, our ideas, our thoughts, how we can support our kids, what's going on with projects, like what's going on to the greater community, and how people can support our kids in their learning. So the idea is we're going to have a video series coming out shortly, short snippets of videos that we'll put out, like, that can be accessible and passed along, tagged, Facebook-type of videos, kind of like.
So what you saw tonight is a great example. You're going to see, we've been working with Alex, so there'll be a series of topics. And I think it's something that board members have brought up in the past, how do we tell the story? It's two-minute snapshots. So what you saw tonight is an example of one of the pieces that we've been working with city bosies and the team on this one. You're going to see more things like that, quick, you know, things around early college high school, quick things about the lens of learning, what it is, and how, quick thing, I don't know how quick we could do it, but the courses that we offer, but maybe breaking down them into the series. These are the college courses. These are the tech courses that we have. These are the, breaking them down so that you can do two minutes, you can take in two minutes, digest it, move on. And the idea is also to get kids that are doing those things, making the comments on videos as well. So to give you, that's the idea. That's really been based on feedback through the comments and feedback from the board over the last nine years. It's only taken us nine years to get there, that we're, we're going to do more of the video snippets. And I think we're starting to put that together. I think really our Fulton Champions kind of started us off with that, kind of how, how do you highlight things? And we're building off, how do we do that with these other? And you saw tonight's synergy as an example for the seal. So that's, I think, what we're doing.
We're, we're really trying to get responses to the feedback that we have. You know, the first question, I understand what my children are learning and how to support them, going back to the lens of learning, how can we communicate where that is? At the high school level, there's a QR code that comes right in the report card that doesn't translate over to the elementary. The format's a little bit different. So we were brainstorming them. We were talking about ECC. We're going to create little QR codes that we're going to put right on the envelopes of the elementary report cards as another avenue for parents to access that, that are a QR code for each of the grade levels. Again, how can we, you're sharing information in multiple ways to families.
I think in terms of like summarizing the, the family part, one thing that stuck out, if you want to go back one slide. In, in the learning, you'll notice that the slices of always are smaller in that section. So that makes me wonder, and when we look at data, it should make us ask questions, not assume answers. So it makes me question like, okay, what do we need to do to, to increase that always here? What do we need to do to get families feeling like they have better access to learn? Like, yes, it's, it's still eighty-five, ninety percent feel good about these things, but the always dipped a little bit here, where people aren't quite as confident. So we started asking those kind of questions. What do we need to do to make sure that our families are feeling more confident with what their kids are learning and what they can do to support their learning? They're good, but they can always be better.
Yeah, so I asked open-ended questions at, at each, at the end of each of those sections. So here's a snippet of family feedback and a report back that we should have the specific ones, but these are general.
So the AI summary, yeah. We did an AI summary with this. They took all the comments. You have all the raw data from the, the comments, but this is a summary. Basically, for the family feedback about culture, they feel like we have a pretty good supportive environment. Many, many commented specifically about teachers and schools and where they feel comfortable. Communication and respect has improved. People feel safe. A lot of folks commented on students that had additional needs or needed additional supports, felt good about what they were getting. But of course, there are areas for improvement, addressing behavior issues, some of the communication pieces, and, and some specific things such as like, do we have, do we have the same amount of favor or understanding for our athletes as we do our non-athletes? And, and things like dietary restrictions or concerns that came up as well. So people were pretty specific in what they asked for as well, and we, hopefully, were able to address some of those things. But overall, it's pretty positive.
Same with the feedback with prepared R and R systems. Getting good feedback with Parent Square. There's things that parents have shared that we need clarity on. So we're thinking, you know, at like our family fun day, you know, could we have a booth that walks parents through? How to communicate through Parent Square or how to organize that. So those are the pieces that we're taking note of and how to support parents. You know, overall, the parents are appreciating our efforts to track their child's progress and that we're making an effort to improve our communication with them.
It'll be interesting to see, parent, when, when we gave this survey, Parent Square was relatively new, so we did hear some like, I want remind, or I wish we had the old way, or some of those things. So it'll be interesting as people have become more familiar with our systems, when we do this survey in the spring, how they're feeling, if we'll, if we'll see less of those comments and if it will be a nice spot.
And the last is still on this morning. Again, parents are pleased with opportunities, like we saw tonight, that we're providing for our students and communicating those opportunities to them. They're asking for more real-world skill-building opportunities. And again, I know last week when we were talking about the social studies, elementary curriculum group, they're talking about, could we have near some of the examples that were shared tonight at each of the grade levels? So that they each experience something.
So that fourth bullet, parents are expressing that, kids are expressing that. New York State is developing that, that idea of, you know, this, this portrait of a graduate and us being able to do more real-world type of skills and looking at different pathways is, is a big shift for our state in what they're asking of, of our students going through. I mean, it used to be that you had, you had two pathways really. You could get a Regis diploma or not. Those are, those are your choices. And now we're looking at, what did you say, Brian, twenty-nine pathways?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven pathways.
And counting more.
And counting more, but all those different pathways for kids to have different opportunities, do those kind of things, those real-world skills and more opportunities for them.
So again, we surveyed three groups, families, students, and staff. So the next seven slides is the student responses, third through six and seven through twelve. We broke it down, because one of the questions we asked was opportunities for extracurricular activities, which isn't necessary, is not offered at the three through six. So we wanted to really, we wanted feedback from students on that, so we felt like we needed to separate that. So we had an overall of one thousand one hundred and fifty-four student responses, six hundred and ninety-eight from third through sixth, and four hundred and fifty-six through seven and twelve. So on the left-hand side is the third through six results, and on the right-hand side, the seven through twelve. I know that the culture advisory, a group of students has already dug into these results and have started analyzing it and making recommendations. One of the pieces that Tammy Sheldon was really excited about was feedback the students were giving about learning and wanting to meet with the instructional coaches, the department chairs, principals, and teachers to ask them about, how do you prepare lessons? Where does that come from? Tell us a little bit more about that. I don't know if you want to sit down, Jeff, you want to think through that.
Yep, so the kids have dug into both. They did prior to us doing the survey, and then after the survey came out, they, they were taking a look at this and analyzing and asking those questions again, like, why did this come out this way? How, how come? And it was interesting for that group, like, why didn't more of our high school kids take this? Why, you know, they, they were wondering like, what's, what's with the survey? Like, they should have just done this. And, and it, it was interesting because they were put it out as an option for them to take and do. Some of them opted out. Seventh and eighth, definitely more kids took a, took an interest in it and did this. And, and the kids were, like, one of the things that we pointed out was the questions mirror the, all three sections for, for adults, staff, and kids, or for families, staff, and kids. Like this, people in, in my school treat others with respect, and I feel welcomed, mirror those first two questions that families had as well. So we looked at that, and then the kids asked questions based on what they saw. Well, why do you think this is? How come we could do this? What could we do about this? And again, when you put the blue and green together, they match up pretty well. In this case, for the kids, what didn't match up as well was the people in my, in my school treat others with respect. Because the kids are there all the time, they can say, well, it's not always. There are times when we see that that doesn't happen. So we addressed, what do, what do we need to do? What do you think we can do to move forward with this? And the kids had some, some thoughts on that.
We have a history of the, the student culture team really developing ideas and strategies and then bringing them back and employing them. It's not just conversations with the kids, but we've actually taken action on the recommendations of kids. And I think that's really important. That's, I think this, this school, or the student culture team is really a strong team. And a rarity where you have districts bringing third to, or fourth, to, is it fourth graders? Fifth graders, fifth graders to twelfth graders together and having these conversations. And it's interesting how they push on one another.
They need to get feedback and develop the questions asked as well.
A couple of kids, well, one of the kids that was presenting tonight has been on, on the student advisory since she was a fifth grader. So she takes it pretty seriously. Continuing with student survey with systems, teachers explain things in a way I can understand. I set goals. You can see goal setting was part of our strategic coherence plan. And for kids, this was one of those things where, when we talked with the student advisory, that idea of setting goals versus building the ability to do that yourself, like give a fish versus teach the fish, that's the idea behind this. And year one of our plan was, how do we develop a system where kids are regularly goal-setting and reviewing those goals? We felt like, and, and the kids said, we've done this, but we haven't done it enough for it to stick yet. So we need to, we need to have more opportunities. We need to go back and look and make adjustments and dig in. And we kind of anticipated that was going to happen. And that's why our focus was on attendance, because it's something that is graspable and the data is pretty clean and easy to use for the kids to, to pay attention to that. So again, that idea, not only do we set goals, I have adequate time to be able to review them. At the seven, twelve level, about three-quarters of the kids said yes, which means that a quarter of the kids are saying, I'm not getting that opportunity, which is something we have to work on. And then that access to extracurricular activities, clubs, sports, music, drama, all those kind of things, over ninety percent of our kids say they take advantage or they have access to those things. Interestingly, the piece of the pie for learning, the blue part with always, classes help me to learn and give me what I need to be successful. At the elementary level, more kids felt like they always did than at the high school. So that's something, again, looking at these things that we're doing, like for the Seal of Civic readiness, kids will have more opportunities, more choices, more pathways along the way. The blue and the green together, again, pretty solid, over ninety percent. And choices with the learning, that was one that our student advisory group said, well, it's kind of a trick question, because we don't always want to have choice. When we want to have choice, it works, but there are other times where we just have to sit and listen and learn and get it together as a group. So part of the reason why we don't see always is because of the design. They don't want it to be always, and they, they kind of saw the flaw in that question. It's kind of a trick question. That's why it was answered. That's what they told us. Nice to see that over ninety percent of our kids feel like the work that they do at school is important. Again, you see that drop-off from seven to twelve for always. So this portrait of a graduate and getting the seals and things lined up is really going to be important for that. Us having pathways like the early college high school and things that in place already really helps our kids, I think, to, to feel that.
Second, through the, the graphs, we've already discussed, you know, their overall feeling, if they have, feel safe and they belong, their voices are being heard, and we're exploring more ways to give them voice and choice and different opportunities.
I think for kids, more often than not, at, at all levels, the thing that was probably to stand out was, what they highlighted as important for them was their friends and their, their adults. The, the teachers that they have, the connections that they have, specific people who make a difference in their lives, came out in their comments loud and clear.
And then the last group was the staff. So here's a breakdown of all the staff that we surveyed, administrators to bus driver monitors, technical staff. And then the right-hand side is the breakdown of how many responses we had at each one of the buildings. So again, the, the questions mirror, so we're, these are the sections that we've shared.
What we found, again, questions versus answers. What we found were, when we broke our staff into subgroups, then these pie charts changed kind of considerably. And we know, for instance, our aides and monitors are a group that had felt under-representative, underrepresented. So I know part of our leadership program, one of our folks that's going through that is working specifically with the aides and monitors, surveying them, finding out what they need. We've had more of a focus on professional development for things like therapeutic crisis intervention, things like that on professional. uh, on professional development days to help them be more prepared and feel part of the culture. It's something as a principal, I know we worked on a lot. You don't realize it's part of those systems that separate us or make us not feel part of the group until you really have them pointed out. Uh, in terms of systems, our communication, professional development, uh, using data and department goals, all positive, but obviously we would like to see, and that's part of our strategic plan is to build systems more than anything, is to build a system so it's universal. We want to see more blue there. Um, it's nice to see the blue and green, but we, we need to see more blue, um, and get rid of those rarilies. Or limited rarilies. Uh, as far as learning, same thing. It's nice to see, again, this mirrors the, the last one there. I feel our, the work that we do is important. Largest chunk of always is there. Um, more than 96% of people think that always or most of the time, the work that they do is important. And that's from all of our groups. It's not just the teachers. It's, that's everyone. But the work we're doing is important. As far as the other areas, again, more blue would be nice. Uh, the blue and green combined is, is decent, but we can always look to improve that. As far as our staff, they thought we have, um, good building level support, uh, collaboration, uh, the spirit of folks and the culture that we have in place. And overall, if you read, read the comments, our commitment to our kids and working for our kids is important and full. More communication, build our systems of support, um, making sure that our, our cultures are inclusive universally for everyone who's there. And then how do we continue to make our professional development meaningful for all of our stakeholders?
And we're trying to be very intentional with after every, um, department meeting or faculty meeting, um, available meetings that we're seeking feedback, you know, what worked for you? What didn't work for you? What, um, how can we improve? What kinds of, um, what kind of clear information do you need from us to support and following up on those suggestions? And making adjustments for our next round of either grade level meetings or our next PD days.
As far as systems, again, um, looking at our multi-tiered system of supports to make sure that we have consistent, uh, implementation across all of our building and all of our levels. Uh, our PD to be specific and targeted toward what people need, uh, addressing the discipline concerns, people feeling that, uh, things are happening and, and we have effective application of, of what's going on, uh, use our data effectively to ask those questions and then making sure that our systems are working and are efficient. Again, uh, our strength, our strength in our district is our people. There's no question about that. Our dedicated educators, um, people universally, and when I say educators, I mean everyone who's working in our schools, who are working with our kids, giving them the opportunities, the time, the love that they need. Our initiatives that we have going on to support our kids and our focus on the wellbeing that they need, not just the academics, but the social, emotional learning and the positive climate. Um, when you read through those comments, you can tell people are passionate. They want our kids to be successful. They want to be able to have our kids come and present and brag about them and, and our community. We definitely need to make sure that we're on top of some of the changes that we're seeing, um, such as student behavior. Making sure that we're proactive about being ready for the portrait of a graduate and the, the changes that are happening to our overall New York State education system. And making sure that our kids, not all kids, every kid, looking at it not just as a group, but looking at them individually and making sure they have the opportunities. With our pathways, it doesn't become an all, it becomes an every, right? We don't look at groups of 12th graders. We look at every 12th grader and say, okay, did we get, did they all get what they need to be successful? So that's kind of a shift that we have is from every to all. It sounds small, but it really is, it's big for our kids. Or from all to every, I'm sorry.
We've gone through the totals. Along with, um, throughout the slides, we've been sharing my action steps. We've already started to implement the video series. Our communication handbook is just about finalized. We'll be able to share out, um, again, at the grade level meetings, we've been really trying to explore different ways for more frequent feedback. Um, at the junior high and high school, they had five week reports that go out. Elementary, it's just every 10 weeks. So how can we provide more feedback to parents about how their students are progressing throughout the quarter, not just at the end? Developing some systems to differentiate between bill bullying and conflict that came up quite a bit in, in the surveys. So we've been talking through how we can address that. And really just thinking about how we can get more surveys, more people to respond to our surveys, but also get digging in and asking more face-to-face questions to get explicit feedback at different opportunities through, at the year.
Next round of surveys is when?
We'll do that in the spring. We're trying, right now, we're getting feedback, when would be the best, um, time to release those? Would it be right around the end of our report card time? Or around events like the music, um, and I think March, there's some music in our schools. Where we have people around. So we're quickly, so we're going to fill out the survey. So I would be really strategic about when we release those.
Questions, thoughts?
I just have a thought, but because surveys are like so important, you know, you, you can, you find, you know, you have a lot of good information that come out, that comes out from it. What are your thoughts on, when I was looking at the graphs, um, always, never are very similar in most cases, percent wise. And then most of the time is greater. So why do you think, why do you think that is? Like yes, it's happening, no, it's not, are very similar. And then you get, eh, I guess so, most of the time. You know what I mean? Have, I just, I'm just wondering like, what are your thoughts on the, all the time and never?
Meaning freezing?
Yeah. Do you know what I mean? Like, how, you're talking about each?
Pie, so there's always right around the same percentage.
Yeah. The piece of the pie always, the piece of the pie never, very similar. And then most of the time is greater. Do you know what I mean? Like what do you think about those two things being so close?
So the student advisory, we spent a lot of time talking about that as well because the kids suggested that we add a fifth choice. So we spent a lot of time talking about what happens on a survey when you add.
Right.
A middle.
Yeah.
That people will, will go with the middle, right?
Right. Yeah.
So that idea of, we wanted to have, overall, the idea of the survey was to have two positives and two negatives. And then the degrees of positive versus negative. We can't just have yes, no, because there are degrees within it. You don't want to have too many steps. So we talked about that. But you're right, as far as like the people who tend to, when you look at individual survey results, a lot of times the people who say always tend to say always, every time, and people who say never tend to say never all, most of the time. It's the sometimes and most of the time that has the flexibility, right?
Right. So how do you gauge, how do you gauge that?
Do you feel like sometimes, cause I know when we, so you fill out surveys, so you're a district too, um, if it doesn't pertain to you, it's very hard to give an accurate account. And you can't skip that question, right? I'm going to assume you guys don't either. You can't skip that question if it doesn't pertain to you. So you fall in that eh, right, sometimes because you don't know.
So where do you pay atten, do you, do we pay attention more to the always and never? And compare those two?
As far as general trends, yes. So like the idea of where, where do those move, like when you see the blue piece get really large, you know, you're doing pretty good stuff, right? Or if you see, and really, in that case, never was almost universally pretty close to the same size, but the, the not, the, the yellow piece was the part that grew. So the blue and the yellow is really where you could see the fluctuations where people change their mind. Um,
And does that fall to the, maybe it doesn't pertain to them, so they don't really know where to answer?
And that's where I think we ask more questions. It's where we, you know, we dig down. So going with what Jeff was saying, you know, where do we see more yellow, red? Um, then maybe that's an area where we do the, um, face-to-face question. When you responded to this, if it was never a rarely, what kind of feedback could you give us to really drill that down? So we can be actionable to that. So I think that's where we ask more questions with the results here.
When they're so close, it just makes me think, well, maybe that is, it, it's, most of the time is good, right? But when you have something so close together of always and never, do we spend more time looking at that maybe because they are so close? And maybe it doesn't pertain to the people? Just a question, like just.
And what, what we found from looking at the strategic plans previously are, um, when you have an outlier, when you have something where, um, it's pretty much like, for instance, the nevers. When you see never, it's 1.3 to 2% pretty universally, and all of a sudden you see six or eight percent. That's the one to pay attention to, like people, even if they're going quick, if they say that, like then you look at systems, you go, this is different from the rest for some reason and we have to take a look. And that's where you look at some of those trends. If that's the case, then what, what we ended up spending a lot of time digging into were the comments.
Right.
Specifically, it was like, okay, you feel this way.
It seems like they, they sort of match, right? The comments will match with the.
Right. So like, so when you see an area like we, we historically had asked comments at the end. Now we ask comments after each section. So you just answer questions about culture. What would you like to address? Typically, if someone said never, they're gonna, they're gonna give us some feedback about.
I think you have to, right?
Right.
Is it, is it part of the survey? Did it?
I opened and we left, whether or not.
If you say always or never, or maybe that was.
If you responded and we liked.
It's just you can't skip a question if it doesn't pertain to you, but you don't have to fill in.
I just think it's, it's interesting. And I was just wondering if you guys, I know that you really spend a lot of time with the data, but if that is actually something that we should look at or you guys already look at, I just found it.
So with the raw data, we're able to filter all the nevers and then look to see, is it a group that is specifically answering those, um, questions? And then can we dig in there throughout why?
Is it a requirement to answer all the questions? Would you not get a more accurate depiction of, uh, or a smaller? Most of the time, if I didn't have to answer the question, not that didn't apply to me. If, if the feeling is that they're gonna, that's what they're gonna pick.
Or yes, or.
Cause their role may not apply. They may not do a lesson if you're in, in one of our, uh, support positions.
Interesting to see if NA as an option, what that would do to the results. We would want to do that for next year. Survey did it because part of this is we have like pre-test, post-test for the year, right? So we don't want to change that up for this year, but maybe for next year, if we threw in a non-applicable in this case, it might, then we can do that as pre and post. That might, that might give people the out of like, I don't know.
I think I'd get a more accurate depiction of always or never.
Right.
And that most of the time has shrink.
Right.
Because it doesn't apply to me. I'm not just gonna, you know, might end up see out.
Excellent thought. Yeah. Thank you.
And again, that, that gives us, that gives us the opportunity to ask questions, not just find answers.
Well, and I think in a number of the different venues, we've been, and we've made comments about the comments and the thing, and realizing people are, they really are reading the comments. And we're making some adjustments. So like, oh, you know, they are, and this is in a number of different venues that we've had. And I think that's important too with the survey, that people are seeing that we're actually in venue, having conversations and we're actually making some adjustments. And they're like, oh, they are reading. I was meeting with a community member yesterday and that was one of the things she talked about was, you know, making sure people know that you're reading the comments. Well, we are.
Yeah.
I think people haven't realized. So now we actually have, we don't quote them because you don't want to.
Yes.
But what you do is you draw patterns. We'll say, gee, we had 10 people that said something. So whether, whether it's the culture kids, whether it's team, um, team, what are you, team meetings, uh, for, uh, meetings with staffs, principals are bringing comments from their schools and putting on very clear that make a comment, something on your mind, put it out there so we can get it into the, and we can act on that, especially if there's a pattern.
Yeah. Something that I would love to see in these type of surveys would be, like, everybody can comment, but we want people to come to the table and solution. So a thing there that says, how do you suggest we improve this would be really a great opportunity to get that kind of feedback. And to really see what, you know, areas we can improve and what issues are out there.
Or actually, yeah, and figure out where, where their mindset is. Yeah. Why are you saying that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Some people are very willing to do that. As you saw, they, they wrote
Yes.
lengthy paragraphs of what we need to do to, to make things work. But I think.
But at least you know where their mind is, yeah, when they're, they're writing it.
And, and when people know that you're reading them and spending time and digging into them, they're more likely to, to give us their time.
Yeah.
Like if they feel like this is just something they do, they'd spend a lot less time than if it's something that they know they're gonna pour over and do something.
They're gonna be heard, you know, or, you know, they definitely will take the time. And I guess when I think of comments, you know, typically I would write a complaint link. Oh, this sucks. You know, whatever it is, like, but if they're, if you're asking me for my suggestion or my opinion, I'm gonna give it back to you.
The one that, it just really stuck with me was the goal setting because I, I asked my, I mean, I asked my own kids, like, what are your goals? Like, what, what does that pertain to? I know, you know, especially with all of the different pathways that we're offering, you know, I don't have common formative assessments in phys ed, but I know, you know, in science, you, you would, you know, just, so I'd be like, I don't know, you know?
In our first year, our focus is on, is really on attendance and having kids learn how to write a goal. But what you're gonna see, the ultimate dream will be exactly, you're in a course and you actually have a goal for that course.
Right.
You're gonna, that's where we're gonna get.
Just, just questions.
No, it's a great point, great point.
We talked about that with the kids at student advisory and said, in order to make systems change, it takes three to five years. So the idea of goal setting, if we just did goal setting for a year and then moved on to something next year, it's not gonna happen. If this year is year one of what we're gonna do and they do that for another couple of years, it becomes part of a system, part of the expectation that we're going to do. We didn't anticipate it was going to be very clean or great this year. Um, and for our kids who are a little younger, if that becomes part of their habits, part of what they're doing in school, it's an expectation as they go up. Um, for, you know, juniors and seniors, we're hopeful that they can do, do work with this, but.
At least they've heard it before.
Well, they've seen it and heard it and hopefully, because they're gonna need it for whatever they do going forward. Hopefully they're hearing that too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, our last presentation, this is our, is our budget and finance update. Kate, I'm just hoping you want to come up and join the table or you're sitting way back there and.
I can't see you, Kate.
Come on, can you just, yeah, can you come up and join the table? Thank you. Then you can, people can make eye contact and ask questions and kick it off budget season in a major way here, so.
For those watching tonight, Kate's been voted on the island.
Once my update is over, you can vote me back off. A quick budget update, um, as you know, last week, we received the initial state aid numbers from the governor's executive budget, which if you remember when we met shortly before the holidays, we had a projection tool from NISCUS that gave us some estimates that we weren't, um, overly excited about. Uh, the very good news is that it would appear that some of the, um, information from the Rockefeller study was reflected upon and our, uh, initial state aid runs look a little better than we expected. The, the biggest change from that NISCUS projection tool was our foundation aid. That's really the only change actually. So I didn't put that, um, projection up there, but we were looking at about a two and a half percent increase in foundation aid according to that tool. And according to the state aid runs, we are slated to receive an 8.09% increase in foundation aid, which is about $2.5 million more, which is huge, you know, when we're looking at filling a gap in our budget. And the bottom line, you know, we're looking at 4.83% overall increase in our state aid when we were looking at 0.8% when we did that initial projection. So, um, to say we were excited is an understatement.
And our pre-K is that reflected in because we took advantage of expanding our program as much as possible? It's a repeat, a full day of sections plus a half day.
Uh, we still have work to do, you know, and we'll certainly discuss this in a lot more detail next week at the budget workshop and what it means to the budget projections, um, for next year, along with other items. Um, one thing that you may hear about in the next week or so, if you haven't heard already, is, um, each year the comptroller releases fiscal.
um, each year the comptroller releases fiscal stress scores for districts. Uh, so although we're not yet in fiscal stress, we're considered to be susceptible to it, which, um, along with that information, the comptroller releases suggestions and tools and, um, strategies you can implement immediately, but also in your decision-making for upcoming budgets. So I think that will be something to focus on next week when we're talking about.
One of those examples, the freezes, things like that, to really look at the expenditures you're doing. So obviously, we're doing some of those things already. So, but as we said, we'll dig in deeper next week.
So some really good positive news that, you know, we, we're getting more aid than we thought. And we still have work to do, but, you know, I think this is a good starting point.
Um, just a quick question, and this is just, uh, we'll probably talk a little bit about more of this next week. But, um, we're talking about the state aid that we're coming in, um, with the federal, um, monies. That is there a possibility that we could see negative in our budget if the freezes hit? I saw like some happen to possibly be like our universal pre-K grants and different things. And I'm just wondering, is that something that maybe wasn't on our radar before that now needs to be on our radar?
We got some mixed messages, and I think more information will come out in the coming days. The latest information that Brian received in the afternoon was that it should not affect, um, things like IDEA.
IDEA, title grant, those are big.
UPK.
Hopefully. I mean, that's what we have, I, you know, to echo, and Kate's doing a great job with, with that piece. You know, when we, that came out yesterday, we were like, it kind of hit us in a different kind of way. Um, today, we got some guidance from the, the National Superintendent's Association, you know, that. But I think as Kate said, we're gonna have to really look at the guidance over the coming weeks. Everybody's kind of reacting and trying to filter through what's gonna be through. I saw, for example, one of the things that caught my eye today was the, the free, um, the food nutrition programs that are out there and the impact. That's a big one for us, for our community. Um, you know, you could go back to the old fashioned way of, you know, but the way we've done it, our program is very much in the black. But more importantly, it's good for our community. All of our families are able to take advantage of that opportunity. Our kids are able to take advantage of that opportunity. And we know that if they come prepared, part of that is basic needs and part of that is basic food. You know, and making sure that those types of things are taking place. Um, you know, so I think there are, there are things like that, head start is part of the program. I'm thrilled that we have our, our early childhood programs and, and what we're doing for our four-year-olds. But we need to see what's going on with our two and three-year-olds.
Yes.
Based on what we're seeing with our kindergarten class and first grade classes. You know, our, definitely pre-K is making a difference, but you can see where kids, um, developmentally, or in some different kinds of places. We have a wider range of kids at a, a younger ages demonstrate, demonstrating some pretty significant behavioral and developmental needs in a higher number than we've ever seen. We might have seen one to two in each of our buildings at those primary levels in each grade. Now we're seeing five to seven, five to eight kids demonstrating some pretty significant, um, types of behaviors. So I, we're gonna watch all of the different grants. We have a lot of different monies that come into our district that pay for a lot of different supports. So one of the things I think during the budget process, as we're going through, is asking about those different grants that we have. Because let's say McKinney-Bento disappeared, you know, it's a small one. But it's one that supports a very specific niche of about 240 some odd kids, I believe it was last year, thereabouts, and their families. And then, and so that's one, it may not be a huge one, but it's one that impacts a, a very targeted group of kids that are going through a lot of change and disruption in their lives, which then spills into the classroom and results in their challenges with learning and, and other kinds of things. So I think I, I'm planting a seed, uh, as we're going along. We always talk about the, the grants. But I think what we forget is the grants are for us about what, three to four million dollars roughly of our budget. You don't see it up here. Those are extras. Yeah, you know, that's on top of, that are doing a lot of services and supports that you don't see. They support our special education programs, IDEA. So I think we will, this year, maybe Kate, what we need to do because of the budget and now what we're seeing at the federal level, we need to maybe let you know, because it may affect other kinds of sources or resources and supports that we've been providing right along.
Yeah, because there could be grants that are state versus federal, or are they all federal grants that we go through? That, that's the thought. It's like, we know what we're getting from states, so.
Like, the IDEA grants, the 611 and 619, and the title grants fall under the federal.
Those are millions.
Those are the largest.
Yeah, okay.
Couple million, right?
Yeah, yeah. I was just looking at Title I today, and that's almost 1.4 million, so that would be a huge hit.
Right, special ed's right about a million.
Yeah.
Is there any explanation why building aid went down?
Yes.
We got buildings that are crumbling.
Yep, but this is a great question, and can you?
It's the timing of the capital projects. So, um, 2019 project got stretched out a bit, and there was a bit of a delay in starting the next project because of that. COVID is the reason. So what happened is, we have this one year where our debt is dropping a bit. And when your debt drops, your building aid drops, because the purpose of building aid is to help you pay the debt service that is associated with your last capital project. So, um, we should see that trend back up next year, because we'll start to have, um, payments on the bonds, the borrowing we're doing with the 2023 project.
Yep.
But I'm going to get a firmer estimate on that from our fiscal advisors, just because, um, I, you know, a conversation we had was that we were gonna see a dip this year, but again, I just want to ensure that this is, it's gonna be a one-year dip. Because that's part of the planning.
Does that affect our tax cap and some of that, which we'll share?
And that's what, you know, we have them to help us with. They help us plan so that, you know, you do, you, you're always, you always have a project going, you're always, I know this sounds crazy, but you're always taking on more debt, so that you keep, you want to keep it kind of steady. So, um, I will have a conversation. Um, the main person we've been speaking with actually just came back from, um, shoulder surgery. So I'll be in touch with him in the coming days or.
I want to just, Nick, that's a great question, because when you see a minus 45%, you're like, what is, it makes your eyes kind of get big. I mean, and I think that that's, a lot of these are actual expenditures that you're going in calculations. The foundation aid is the one that we, we have the most flexibility with. But it's something we talked about, because it affects other things. At one point in my, I want to say it was my second or third year, we had a negative tax cap, 1.74, negative to the negative side. So, you know, then the debt limit is what kind of caused that to happen. So we want a nice, balanced, predictable kind of overtime. And then, I won't be here, but for those of you that are on, on the board in the future, when you have the opportunity to, to double that debt limit with the new, with the constitutional change that went through, that's gonna allow this district to finally, um, and small cities across the state, to stop doing these little 14 million, 20, they sound, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you start looking at what it costs, you're gonna be able to double those projects. You may have a $40 million project someday here in Fulton, which could be a game changer.
So is it, is the building aid, um, so significant because we are a small city? Or if we looked at, um, districts around here, are we gonna see a negative 45% because everybody is?
You're gonna see, I think, a range of things. I, you know, every district was in a different place with their projects, if they had been approved and had access.
Really.
We had a ticket.
I saw some that went down, some that were steady, some that went up a little bit. It depends, like Brian said, where they are with their projects and where their debt level is. And we just happened to have a drop-off in our debt for this particular year.
Yeah, but it's not a bad, it's just something we need to be very cognizant of, and, you know, we saw it coming a little bit, so we want to fix that. But it's, it's not unheard of. If you look at the information I sent, you can look at any district in the state.
Yes.
And look at those. This, in the, the weekly I sent?
Yeah.
There's a click in there and it'll take you.
I know that we have been really diligent in making sure that we're on, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, like Nick said, like, 45 is like huge.
Well, the fifth-year extension where we had to take it over a little bit longer, because it took 34 weeks in the hopper.
Yeah.
For one of those projects. I mean, now all of a sudden, this, um, November, December, just recently, they reenacted the, uh, what's the quicker?
The third-party review.
The third-party reviews. Okay, now we're gonna get projects done and approved in 15 weeks. If we had not had a 53 or a 34-week project, we would have put the new gym floor in. We would have done all those projects. They would have caught on that debt limit, you see what I'm saying? So that's the kind of thing that can push this out like that.
If I can possibly have an update on what to expect for next year by the fourth, I will. Just so we can kind of, you know, put, make, we'll all feel better if we just know what's coming in the future. I'm hoping I can also have, um, the tax cap to present on the fourth. I have a pretty good guest estimate, but I want to be sure before I, I give you what I think the number will be. So I'll do my best to have those things ready for next week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a good question, Jen.
Um, the other slides I was going to go over, um, because we didn't have a second meeting in December, and then we missed the first meeting in January, you have November and December's financials. I know there's a lot of content tonight, so I can go through the slides, or I can give you just a quick verbal on where we are with the financials. Maybe just this, um, this first slide I'll show. So, um, I've been expanding on this a little bit, but like I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot to get through in tonight's meeting, so.
Cut out the lines, okay?
So, um, they look okay. They're continuing to be sort of on the same level that we saw at this point in time last year. Um, healthcare is ahead of where it was at this time last year, which I mentioned.
Ahead to the negative.
Um, we're, we're spending it quicker.
Right, that's true.
Yeah, so that's certainly something I'm keeping an eye on. Um, you know, we're starting to see the revenue and the expenditures, the percentage that we're at. So we've realized 43% of the revenue we expect, and we've spent 42% of what we expect to spend. That's really close. Like, I'd be more comfortable if the revenue, uh, the revenue percentage was a little higher than that. So I think, again, all of these things coming together telling me that, that the, the spending freeze was necessary and this was the time to do it, um, in every effort to, to keep ourselves at least as close to on track as we can. Um, and we appreciate your support in moving forward and toward, you know, being very mindful of our spending as we navigate the rest of this year. So that's how the lines look, you know, about the way they looked this time last year, but keeping a very close eye, again, on healthcare. And that's really all I have for presentation-wise.
Any other questions? So next week, we'll be here, February 4th on Tuesday, which is next Tuesday, 6:00.
6 o'clock, right?
Yep.
All right, and it isn't open, it's workshop, so workshops are open to the community. So we will advertise, you know, uh, that. And it really will try to get some nuts and bolts in place for you, to get some foundational pieces, um, there. And then, um, that'll prepare us with any questions, um, for the lobby days, things like that, that we may want to talk to Barclay. I, I will say, and as Kate and I are, we were very happy when we saw the foundation aid number.
Almost gave me.
Yeah, I mean, and again, we'll talk more about it, but I think there are other, um, school districts that their save harmless dropped to 2%. And, you know, I understand both sides of this argument. Um, but, you know, I, I am, I'm very happy, grateful. It looks like they took into consideration poverty and combined wealth ratios and that kind of thing. That seems to be the area, from what I've read, I, I've been sharing with you. Please take note, NISBA's done a really good job making something complex simple. Um, so that's why, if, if you want me to not give so much stuff, but the NISBA stuff, I think, makes a lot of sense for board members. They're, they're make, they're bringing it to a level where it's understandable. Where in NISCUS, they kind of put it at an administrative level, I have to tease through a little bit.
Yep.
Um, but if, if, is it helpful that I'm sending you that level of information? I know you probably get it from NISBA directly, but I like to draw attention to certain things, so. Let me know if you're getting too much, not enough, or, or Kate, and we will be able to walk you through those things, but we'll go from there. So next week on the fourth, we'll be budget and focus and kick us into February and see, see what we're gonna, it'll kick us off towards May, so. All right, and that's the conclusion of Superintendent's, uh, presentation this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, everybody. Action 4.01, accept financials. Somebody move it.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Action 4.02, approve the disposal of surplus property. Move it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Action 4.03, to accept the corrective action plan. Move it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Action 4.04, approve the municipal cooperation with NYC LA FCA.
Move it. Second.
Was that Nick? Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Action 4.05, accept a donation from Compass Credit Union. Move it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Thank you for that very generous donation. Action 4.06, resolution to dissolve extra classroom accounts.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Action 4.07, resolution insurance reserve fund. Move it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Action 4.08, approve participation with ROC. Move it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Action 4.09, accept the single audit report. Move it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Action 4.10, the tax. Thank you. Proceed, proceeding. Move it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We did, we had Fallon. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Thank you to my village. Action 5.01, approve committee on special education.
Move it.
Second. All right, so Lori and Nick.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. All right, for our personnel.
No policies.
Nope, let's do policies first. I am just really moving through today. All right, so 6.01, to approve our policies. Move it. Second. All those in, John, right?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. Then we have our restating policies for our 6.02, so if you have any questions, please let us know, read through those, and we will vote on them next time.
Just to throw in there, Brenda, the, you know, policy, a lot of the changes we're doing are just with some of the word. Like, one of the things we're looking at with the lawyers, not warriors, is whether we should use will or shall in some of the, you know, simple, a lot of the changes aren't at the higher levels, so. That's kind of what we're looking at when we look at some of the ones, especially the ones that we have to check each year to make sure they're up the code.
All right, thank you so much for bringing us up to date on that. Appreciate it. Now we will move on to personnel. Would my colleagues be willing to batch, we're gonna do it in a couple of batches, 7.01 to 7.07? Move it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. And then we have item 7.08.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Abstaining? Passes 501. And then our last batch would be 7.09 to 7.17. Second. Tim and Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 600. It's to the end though. All right. There we are. All right, moving on to Board Forum. We had a lot to digest this evening. It's been quite a while since we've all been together, so let's start with Mrs. Parkinson.
Oh, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so a few things. I first wanted to, um, say what a wonderful job our students did with their capstone project. Um, obviously, we had so many questions and we really loved seeing them. I am very excited about the projects. I am very excited about the projects, um, you know, seeing them go back to ninth grade this year, they work at Canale Landing, with our eighth graders, and how that, um, looks in the future. Very excited, and they did a wonderful job. Second point I wanted to discuss was the surveys. I just wanted to reiterate that we do read every single comment, that they are completely anonymous. Please, 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 staff, students, um, our community members, you know, respond, your voice does matter, we do consider everything that you say. And at the end of the day, we're all working towards the same goal. We all want to improve our community and our school district, and make this city and our schools a better place. Third thing I wanted to talk about is the budget. Kate, you did a great job. I do just want to be the negative Nancy for a second to, um, point out that I know we have budget workshops coming up, and that's so important. You know, I've been hearing a lot back from our community members, you know, our taxes went up, mortgage payments just went up, the new national grid bills people are seeing are going up hundreds, two hundreds of dollars. I think our city vote in May is going to be very difficult and challenging for us. I, I don't want us to go into this budget season thinking that our typical two to three percent is just going to get approved easily by community. I don't think it's gonna bode well for the district, so we really, I'm encouraging us to have some really difficult discussions about what this looks like for our future. And then lastly, I, this is a pet peeve, I'm sorry, but we've been getting updates for, in Parent Square, about this family fun day in March twenty-second. I hate it. I, it's, we're not communicating to our community properly what it is. You get, you get the update, and it's come for family activities, and food, and prizes, and yes, those things are there, but really, we have a different mission, and we're not clearly communicating, you know, what it is. Yeah, yes, there is registrations for U P K, but it'd be great to see that information.
I think we're gonna do a video on that.
Okay.
Just so you know.
I know, I'm just saying.
I just know, but I, because we take that to me.
I know, but we've done it.
No, it's a great point.
Past.
That's why we're, I agree with you, Fallon.
The name is misleading.
We're on this one together, I agree.
Thank you for bringing that up, because that was on my list.
It drives me nuts, when we talk about communications and transparency, it's, you know, yes, we do those things, but we're really there with a goal and a mission, and we really want to communicate that. And then the last thing is, I know that we do registration for kindergarten, U P K. If we can include like what's required, so our community members can come there prepared with what they need, would also be beneficial. And that is it for me, thank you, everybody.
It's a coincidence. Mr. Compass?
Summary's on all different areas, but I really felt like with all the presentations, starting with the kids and ending on budget, I feel like everyone involved, it, it started the year off well, because it seems like the people aren't just feeding us numbers, but actually are looking at the data, understanding it, and presenting it in different ways. You know, for me especially, Zach, when you were talking about when the blue shifts more to the green, and we look, you know, just the way you can visualize and understand that you realize that's an area, or the way we talk about the budget and saying, well, this explains why we're looking at this or doing it this way, and not just saying like, okay, this is it, here's what you can see. Telling the story with it, that's really important, and I thought everyone did a great job with that tonight. Another area, I don't have the execs, and I don't want to mess up and forget somebody, but I've been hearing some great things with achievements that some of our students on the winter sports have been doing. So I just want to say congratulations to all of you doing these great things. Other areas as well, I just, you know, whether it's concerts, whether it's everything, I'm just hearing great things that the students in our district are doing. So I just want to congratulate all of you out there, no matter what it is you're doing, that you're out there doing it, you're doing it well, and you're representing your community well.
Thank you. Mr. Dejolonne?
Oh, just want to comment on the, uh, the students, and, uh, what is it, community synergy, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, community synergy, what a great program. It's obvious that they, they teach us a lot. They were very comfortable speaking with us, and knowledgeable of what they're doing. Great discussion on the survey, I understood it much more than I have in the past, so. Kate, thank you for the budget input, our updates. I look forward to them now, I understand.
Thank you. Ms. Mayville?
I love hearing, um, from our kids, um, what they're doing, and just having this, um, visual, the portrait of a graduate. Everything that I've heard tonight is really centered around this. And it, it, it goes from the surveys, it goes, um, from what we heard from the kids and the advisors, to the budget, and I really feel like everything is coming together. What is this, my fourth year? And it, it really, I, I really, I'm feeling like we have different branches coming from everywhere, but the path is clear, and the, the branches, the leaves are falling onto the path. You know what I mean? Like, everything is, is set in place, and I feel like we're in a good place. And hopefully, we can keep it going with this budget season, you know? Because I feel like we're going forward, for sure.
Yes, yes.
For sure, oh, and, um, I don't usually hear a lot about concerts, because my kids are not involved in, um, the, the music and the chorus and stuff, but I have heard nothing but just kudos and how good the elementary concerts were. So many people were talking about how animated they were, and it was just great to hear.
So, our, our music team took a risk this year. They wanted to try something new, and they did joint concerts, because they had shared staff between two buildings and two buildings. So instead of four individual concerts, we did two joint concerts, so that, uh, Granby and Fairgrave kids did a joint concert, and the Volney and Lanigan kids, because they share music staff, so they prepared the same music. So we had larger ensembles, we had more, I mean, a full, full band, full orchestra, or fuller than we've had in the past, and, um, teachers were very excited. They wanted to give that a shot, all the teachers were on board, and, and were excited about it as well, so.
And what's fantastic is, Ms. Mayville, you said your kids aren't normally involved in those, and you wouldn't know, but you are hearing from the community.
I'm hearing, yeah, I'm hearing a lot.
So that means it must have been a great success.
Really great, yeah.
That you, that they took that risk and, you know.
And I didn't even know that they were joined together, but that's, that's even better.
Towards the end, it was after the holidays, they.
Yeah.
I'm gonna think of the same thing I heard about, and I didn't know about it doing, but I just did that.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, so hey.
Even went for the smell.
It's even better. I was gonna say. I did hear about that too, but we're not gonna mention that, we're, we're being positive.
All the forecasters were wrong, I was very frustrated that night as well.
We're being positive. We did the best we could with what we had, so. And the, and the concert was fantastic. It was worth it. Yes, yeah, that is great.
Uh, Ms. Paul? Well, I agree with what everyone says, and I just hope everybody out there understands how hard everyone works for what they're doing, what you, what you do. And it is making, you're making it much easier for me to understand, because I came in here and thinking, what am I doing? And, um, and I appreciate that, and I hope everybody else appreciates it. And the kids, it was phenomenal. When I first read about that cap, capstone?
Yes.
I just, I, I just, I was very excited about that. I mean, it doesn't take a lot, or, it takes a lot to get me excited about something, and I was very excited about that.
That's great. Um, I definitely concur with all of what my colleagues have said. I just wanted to add a couple things, I mean, obviously, having our kids in is the most important. Kate, you know, the budget is very exciting and all, but. It's hard to follow.
Kids go first. I know. Things can just trend upward with the kids following.
But, but it is wonderful when our kids come in. I mean, I don't know about my colleagues, but at their age, you know, I wasn't, especially when we have our younger kids in the high school, I wasn't comfortable standing up in front of my classmates, little as a bunch of strangers in a room, you know, that are adults, that, you know. So I love how, like, you would ask them, how do they enjoy learning this way? And having these different parts, hands-on, I kept hearing from a couple students, hands-on being part of this and learning all the different things. I mean, I, I'm just in awe of our kids every day, whether they're in a classroom, whether they're on the fields, or in the, on the stage. I mean, our kids do great things here in Fulton, and we have you and our staff to thank for everything that's, you know, is, is coming out of our, our school, so. Thank you.
And I don't know about the other board members, but do you feel like they get better at speaking each year?
Yes.
Like, I just feel like the level tonight was like, you just, you think they do a great job, and then someone, and they just seem to completely shatter the last, you know, rule.
Yes, they, they are fantastic, we are, we are very lucky with our students here, so. One other thing, or two other things, actually. I haven't done it since October, but I do want to say I love how our Proud to Be a Champions are going. We see what our faculty and our friends in the district are doing here, and the fact that you're doing these videos for us all to see. I love the surprise factor on their faces.
Wait till this Friday.
Oh, my goodness.
For the record, the last video that we sent out got around twenty-one thousand views.
Wow.
So we're gonna, we're gonna recognize Paige every month from that.
Perfect, perfect. So our, our, one that's coming out, it's not a secret that, that Proud to Be a Champion member knows?
She does.
Okay, so I just wanted to know, you know, Adam and Frank and Nikki, you know, Renee, Shanaymat, Cheyenne, Madison, those were from November and December. We did not get together much in those months, so I didn't get an opportunity to thank them and congratulate them for their, you know, contributes to our district. And then this month, Cindy and Paige, and Tracy, next week, I can't wait to see her video, so. She's gotta step it up if she's gonna get those twenty-one thousand plus viewers, right?
You're gonna put last year's winners, we're in progress of putting all the banners right there.
I love that.
And then we'll switch them out every.
That is great.
Kind of switch them out per month every year, so they always stay full.
That is awesome, I, I really love that, I really do love that. I hope that everybody survived Regents Week. I know with the delays and cancellations, it kind of made a matter of how your Monday went. Monday was interesting, rolling in from the snow day on Friday to, to, um, that, but I, I really do thank everybody for being able to kind of roll with the punches when it comes to our central New York weather, and, um, you had told us that it was pretty successful for, for our students up to this point.
I think for what we did, I think, you know, I think we're doing, we're gonna constantly look and reflect on how Regents Week went and make adjustments. We're already discussing what it could look like next year.
Next, that's great. I hope everybody enjoys their bonus day off tomorrow, um, for those staff and students. Don't go to work tomorrow, Jen, you have the day off.
I would've realized that at some point.
But it's, it's great, and I appreciate everybody's efforts in our district, so. We probably do not have a second public forum? No? Okay. We are going to move into our second executive session for this evening. I want to thank everybody who joined us, uh, at home this evening, and for everybody who came in tonight. We really appreciate you, and thank you, have a good evening. All right, we're moving in.
We gotta move it.
We don't move it, right?
I need to move it, because you might not want to move into executive session, friends. And I have somebody move that.
Move it.
Second.
Five-minute break until Sue, you wanna get Susan?
Yes, was that Fallon and Jen?
Yes.
Okay, can somebody move action 8.04 disciplinary appeal?
Move it.
Second.
Okay, the decision of the superintendent of schools is upheld.
Move it.
Well, where did... All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Just for... It was Lori that was second. Did the second or was it Jen? Lori? Okay. Action 9.01 adjournment?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Thank you everybody.